The first item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? And we are working off an amended agenda, so I hope everyone has the current agenda. Mr. Halsey?
I'll get one back there.
We have an agenda on the table. I know we got it over email, but I just...
None of us have it.
Okay.
It's got three items instead of two. There are no additions or corrections to the agenda. We'll go on to petitions and communications. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes, this is your chance to do so. Just fill out one of these white cards at the back of the room, bring it up to myself or the clerk, and you'll get your five minutes. First is Alex Rogeri, 1817 South Neal on Economic Development. Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I promise to keep this brief. I just wanted to take this occasion to say just a few words about economic development in the city of Urbana. First of all, I would like to compliment staff and the council for the progress that's been made in recent years in economic development in Urbana. I think that there's been quite a lot of positive things that have happened, and much of that is due to the vision, the leadership of not only the staff but the council, and I want to compliment you on your efforts and encourage you to continue those efforts. I was a founding member of the Urbana Builders and Developers Association and have served now with the Urbana Business Association, which we merged into for the last three years as their secretary, so I've had occasion to observe the progress that's been made. To that end, I have recently read a book that I was real excited about. You've heard of The Seven Habits of Highly Successful People. This is a book by Jack Schultz. It's called Boomtown USA, and it's subtitled "The Seven and a Half Keys to Big Success in Small Towns." And you may have heard of Jack Schultz. He was one of the keynote speakers at the Illinois Municipal League up in Chicago last month, and he is also scheduled to be a guest speaker for our Chamber of Breakfast this spring, in March 2005. Anyway, I've been thrilled with the book. I think there's just lots of really good ideas in here. I think Urbana already espouses a lot of those ideas. I have purchased a copy for every member of the UBA, which I'll be giving to them, of UBA Board, and I went ahead and purchased a copy for every member of the city council, and I would like to donate these to the city. And there's enough copies here for everybody, including the city attorney, and if you need more copies, let me know, because I've got a case of these. I want to get them into the hands of people that can use the information in here, so...
All right.
I'll just leave these with your city clerk, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Okay, thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Wyman?
I just want to ask, Mr. Holtz, there's no problem with the gift banner? Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Thank you. Next is Dural Cruz, 2007 South George Huff Drive.
Good evening. I'm sorry I'm not bearing any gifts tonight, like the previous speaker. It sounds like a wonderful book, maybe, to check out. My name is Dural Cruz and I live at 2007 South George Huff Drive with my wife, Jan. I want to take this opportunity just to introduce myself to you and especially the residents of Ward 7 in Urbana. This morning, I submitted my application to the mayor's office expressing interest in being considered as an interim alderman from Ward 7. Although relatively new to the Urbana community, I have not made this decision hastily or lightly. Since retiring as an elementary school principal and central office administrator from Attune School District, I have become very interested in local city government and issues of concern to the community. A number of people have approached me and encouraged me to consider applying for this position. I am certain that Mayor Satterwhite and the current members of the city council are hoping that several qualified persons apply for this position. I believe I am one of those candidates. In addition, I also know that the residents of Ward 7 want and expect to be fairly and equitably represented by the person selected by the mayor. They too, by the way, have a great stake and interest in this decision. Because representative democracy is so important to effective government, I have made an effort to walk the neighborhoods of Ward 7 in recent weeks to introduce myself and to meet more people living there. I have listened to their concerns and hopes for Urbana. They are wonderful people and were extremely supportive and encouraging of my efforts. In this short period, I have received the warm support and strong endorsements of dozens of individuals. A list of names is attached to my application. In closing, I feel I would be an excellent public servant and an asset and productive member of the city council. I am open-minded, hardworking, and committed to public service. My 21 years in various levels of school administration have demonstrated that I can work successfully with people from all walks of life to set common goals and accomplish great things. I think I can offer these qualities as an alderman on the city council and especially to the residents of Ward 7. I look forward to the opportunity of working with you and on behalf of the residents of Ward 7, if you so decide. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any other petitions and communications from members of the public? From council members?
Just a reminder that polls are open beginning at 6:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and I think people should be encouraged if they can vote before they go to work or before they go to classes to avoid what we expect to be probably pretty long lines later in the afternoon. And, yeah, so just to vote early. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea. If we had a record turnout, why, there could well be lines at virtually every polling place, so vote as early as you can tomorrow. Reports of officers, I know Chief Adair was going to make a report on what turned out to be a very busy weekend from the police perspective with the confluence of homecoming and Halloween and daylight savings time all in the same weekend.
Good evening. I've provided each one of you with a copy of the material from which I'm going to speak. This weekend, as the mayor indicated, was a very busy week in Aurora, starting at 7:00 a.m. on Friday, October 29th, and continuing until 7:00 a.m. this morning. The Urbana Police Department handled 80 police reports during that time period. Fortunately, the majority of them were loud noise type complaints, and while West Urbana and our campus town area is famous or infamous for that, this weekend was no exception. However, given the fact that it was homecoming, good weather, and the clock was pushed back, which gave us an additional hour of alcohol consumption, it was citywide, but a significant concentration in the campus area. Case in point was, we received a call to 808 West California at approximately 2:56 a.m. on the 30th involving a very large group of young people. It was a loud music complaint. Because of the heavy workload, we did not arrive until after 3:18 a.m. We did warn the occupants there and went on to handle other calls and subsequently received several additional calls to that location. We didn't return because of the workload until some 4:40 a.m., at which time we did shut the complaint, the loud party down, and we did issue a notice on loud party and resisting and obstructing an officer, did take a person into physical custody. We also received a call there on the 31st at 1:06 a.m., an even larger gathering, at which time we did shut the party down and we issued yet another notice for loud noise with a mandatory court appearance. And we made several other arrests for other disturbances at that location or in close proximity. And again, we had a somewhat delayed response time because of the multiple calls elsewhere in the city. Case in point being 708 South Goodwin. We had a large party there, which resulted in one or more arrests at that location, and we also had to shut that one down. And at 1508 North Cunningham, we made a call to that location where we made multiple arrests. So it was a busy night, to say the least, in addition to our citywide domestics, traffic accidents, and et cetera. As a result of the ongoing challenge we had at 808 West California, I implemented a zero tolerance approach to dealing with any and all violations reported at that location. I made this decision after reviewing the call history and the police report records dating back to August 15th, which was the beginning of this school term. We've had 11 reports, or calls, to that location. The most recent prior to this was the weekend of October 8th, 10th, and 9th. I mean, 8th, 9th, and 10th, I'm sorry. We was called to that, which is also a weekend. We were called to that property on each night, and we did issue notices for loud disturbances at that time, for a total of 11 total reports made at that property. So I did not arrive at that decision lightly. But as a result of this week, we went one step further, and that was identified the owners of the property and asked for an audience, and did receive a very cooperative response from the new owners of that property. And met with them along with my assistant chief this afternoon at approximately 2:30, and they were totally unaware of the behavior of their renters at the newly acquired properties, and they pledged their total support to work with the department and the neighbors in the area to make positive changes. I'm very encouraged, because shortly after our meeting, I received an email, and I'll just read it for you, and it was very to the point. "Thank you for introducing me and my wife to our tenant problem at 808 California. And we purchased this house earlier this year in hopes of improving the neighborhood to benefit the community. How unfortunate that we would be addressing problems with our disrupted tenants after only three months. I want to ensure your department that we are taking immediate steps to remedy the situation. We will be discussing options with our tenants as of this date, 11/1/2004, and will expedite our rights as a landlord in solving this community issue. Our sincere apologies to your department and the neighbors of 808 California." I'm extremely optimistic, given the verbal support that we've received from the new property owners and with the continued support of the citizens of the immediate area that we can and will make very positive improvements in that immediate area, dealing with the loud noises that have been a problem sporadically throughout this young fall semester.
Okay, questions for the chief?
Chief, when you and I were talking about this earlier, you mentioned that this weekend was unusual and that generally, you know, after the first weekend when, you know, people are moving back and getting accustomed to the Urbana rules, but generally, it's been a relatively quiet fall so far. Is that right, or?
Yes, in fact, it has been extremely quiet this year, and I wish I could attribute it to the effective efforts of the Urbana Police Department, but we've just not had the loud parties or the large gatherings with one or two exceptions. Our calls in West Urbana or our campus town area are significantly down until this weekend. However, the volume of this weekend helped get us back to normal.
Yeah, to, you know, we do take the loud party complaints very seriously, but as the chief said, in a busy weekend, sometimes we can't respond immediately when there are other calls for other loud parties and other routine matters, accidents, and so forth that you have to respond to.
Yes.
So we do ask for the understanding of people in our neighborhoods where there are loud parties, but we will respond as soon as we can.
Absolutely.
So, any questions for the chief? Okay, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Any other reports of officers?
We have the monthly ED report. I'd like John to touch on the highlights.
You have the report handed out to you, and as Bruce said, I'll touch on some of the highlights under our business retention visits. The most of those are occurring in the Phila Road Business District. Also, in that area, we've met with County Market and the development firms of Hillshire, Atkins, Sperry-Van Ness, and Eagle Ridge Development in order to inquire to their thoughts about revitalizing the Phila Road Business District. We brought a report to you last month, and as well, you amended the redevelopment incentive program guidelines to make them more flexible and more effective, and we completed the Phila Road Business District resident survey, and we had over 540 responses to that. Some more notable items last month, or this month, I should say. Last month, we conducted groundbreaking for the Stratford Project and held press conference for the Lincoln Square Village Redevelopment Project, a couple of multi-use projects in the downtown area. We're currently organizing an informational forum for the Lincoln Square Village, and that will be held on November 20th, and there'll be information sessions at 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. And that'll be in conjunction with the first indoor market of the year. Under our Urbana building permits, we have 146 permits issued in 2004 under the Builder Ban a Program, and that brings us to a total of 567 permits under that program during its existence. We've been busy working with the CVB and the EDC and UBA. We conducted a prospect tour with the EDC this month, and the majority of the buildings that we looked at were actually in the Phila Road Business District, and some of those uses for office use as employment centers is one of the recurring reuses that we see for those types of buildings, so that's proving out. We also assisted with planning for the Builder Banner Parade of Homes, which will occur November 7th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and we assisted with UBA's first business after hours. Kathy Larson worked very hard and conducted another successful pumpkin fest last week, and sorry to say, but November 13th is the last market on the square, which has been very successful this year. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Wyman?
So if November 13th ends the market at the square, is there, does market in the square start the next Saturday then?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Just one last thing under reports of officers. I've got a proclamation honoring Pat Stebbins, who is on the Housing Authority Board. It reads, "Whereas the volunteer contributions Patricia Stebbins has made to the Housing Authority Board of Champaign County and the well-being of her fellow citizens is a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority, along with her 10 years of devoted service from 1994 to 2004, has earned the gratitude of the county and the cities of Champaign and Urbana. Whereas Patricia's interest and devotion to the welfare of her fellow citizens has set a precedent of community responsibility, which will serve as an inspiration for all of us. Whereas Patricia's 10 years of volunteer service gives us a chance to celebrate her deeds, reflect on her wise guidance, and toast her outspoken courage, steadfastness, and devotion. Now therefore, we, Jerry Schweihart, Mayor of Champaign, Patricia Avery, Chair of the Champaign County Board, and Todd Satterwhite, Mayor of Urbana, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 28th, as Patricia Stebbins' Day in Champaign County and the cities of Champaign and Urbana." And we'd like to pay this tribute to Pat Stebbins. This was intended to be read last week, but we didn't have a meeting last week, so her day has already occurred on last Thursday. So, again, thanks to Pat Stebbins for all of the things that she's done for the community. And now we'll get on to new business. We have three items. The first is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Illinois Department of Transportation and the city of Urbana on Goodwin Avenue. Mr. Gray?
Thank you. Tonight's request is for approval of a resolution that would authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the IDOT City Agreement. Basically, this agreement outlines the cost share for this project. The grant that we received was for a total of $186,000. The city portion would be the balance of that amount. We're looking at a project that we estimate probably in the order of $325,000. We would be going out for bids for this project in early next year with construction. It would be for the bike path during the spring, summer of next year. The project limits would tie into an existing bike path at the corner of Springfield and Goodwin and would run north on Goodwin Avenue up to Bradley Avenue. And this is a distinct separate project from the street construction project that's currently going on now. Just a quick status on that, we've had a lot of rain recently. We're hopeful that we'll have the street open completely by the middle of this month, but it's been kind of tough for the contractor as of late to make good progress, but that's the street portion of the work that is work being performed by Central Illinois Tile. So, anyway, I'll answer any questions you all might have, but finally, we received approval for this bike path design report from IDOT recently and have this agreement before you know.
Questions? And what, we want to get this out, to get this bid in the near future, is that right?
We're shooting for a bid opening in January.
There are no questions? A motion would be in order?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have a revised ordinance authorizing the city attorney to request that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development grant exceptions for conflict of interest of former alderperson Laura Huth.
Very briefly, well, that's quite a mouthful. This is much the same request as was before this body about two and a half months ago. It's required by HUD under the revolving door provisions. If this council approves it, it goes next to the county and to the city of Champaign, and then it'll be forwarded from me to HUD.
Okay, are there any questions?
So, does this discussion that we're having tonight, and assuming we vote on this, is it your opinion, and that's sufficient discussion to satisfy any needs or concerns that HUD may have?
Yes, the HUD regulations don't specifically require a discussion, but in a letter addressed to me from HUD dated June 30th, 2004, HUD officials said that the normal process by which this happens is that there's full disclosure of the situation, which is, which I've done in my memos to you, together with all the correspondence and the analysis of the issues, and discussion. He said that normally there's discussion at the city council or a county board meeting. As I read that, that doesn't mean that there's anybody sitting there saying, "Well, you better ask some questions, you better have some discussion." If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If you don't, the opportunity for discussion that's here at this city council meeting suffices to satisfy that requirement.
Thank you.
Okay, and to follow up on that, then, as far as the disclosure, the written record is, the substance of the disclosure doesn't have to be made or anything like that, is that right?
No.
Okay.
Just for the record, the written record that's here before us today is my memo to the mayor and the rest of the Urbana City Council dated October 28th, 2004, with a variety of attachments that are referenced in it, plus my memo dated August 13th, 2004, again to the mayor and the rest of the city council, with my explanation of the situation in it and the attachments to that. Again, this is a request for waiver. It's much the same request for waiver that was removed from the August 16th, 2004 council meeting at Ms. Huth's request. The only substantial difference being that in the, pardon me, intervening time, Ms. Huth has now, of course, resigned, and so the waiver request that will be forwarded to HUD, assuming that all the jurisdictions approve it, would take into account that factor.
Do you expect that the city of Champaign and the county will put these on their next agendas, and then if so, how soon would we hear back from HUD regarding this exception?
I can't speak with certainty about when Champaign, the city of Champaign and Champaign County would act on these things. We will press it forward as soon as, as rapidly as we can with them, but leaving, understanding, of course, that how they handle it is up to them. And likewise, there's a question about whether they choose to do it administratively or by formal council or county board action, and that's completely up to them. My sense is that HUD will act on it pretty quickly. They have been, they have, on a number of occasions, expressed some pretty serious frustration, bordering on anger once or twice about why this thing hasn't yet been taken care of. They repeatedly expressed the view that it should have been taken care of before Ms. Huth ever even accepted the Habitat position, and undercurrent of the whole thing was that there's a possibility of the city losing its funding if it wasn't properly resolved, and that's to the tune of something like $700,000 a year in HUD funds. HUD repeatedly expressed to us, to both myself and Mr. Walden, as well as to Ms. Huth, that although theoretically they could grant a waiver if she held and retained both positions, that it was extremely unlikely that a waiver would be granted by them in that circumstance. And they expressed to all three of us, that is, including Ms. Huth, that it would be far preferable for her to leave one position or the other. Eventually, that's what she did. And in my, when I let HUD know after Ms. Huth announced her resignation, they seemed extremely relieved that it wasn't going to become a very difficult situation for them with respect to our funding.
Let me ask you, on, as far as the waiver, the exception is concerned, then, is that, you know, with the federal revolving door policy, is that just so that Ms. Huth can accept that, be in that position, or does it enable Habitat to get funding, or do they still have to wait a year after she has resigned from council to get funding?
That'll depend on how HUD views it ultimately. They haven't told us one way or the other about that. What we do know is that if HUD grants a waiver to Ms. Huth at this point, that waiver would be for the purpose of allowing her to keep her Habitat position. And the reason that it's required under HUD's regulations is because of this revolving door language. The revolving door language says essentially, if you hold a government position in which you have authority to take HUD money and put it into a bucket, and you also hold a private position in which you're asking for money out of that bucket, then that's a conflict, and you can't hold the private position for, you can't take the private position for one year after you've resigned the public position. So even though Ms. Huth is no longer in the city council position, there is still that one-year period for which HUD would require that revolving door sort of waiver. And yes, if HUD grants it, then that would allow Ms. Huth to stay in her Habitat position and continue to do that work. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, but we don't know...
Oh, and it's in terms of whether Habitat can then, during that one-year period, receive city funds? That's going to be up to HUD. I don't think... Um, I don't think their regulations specifically address that one way or the other.
But they know that that's a question that they need to address.
Yes.
Is there a conflict if, um, Habitat does not receive funding for a year, and during that year, Ms. Huth is a director of Habitat, and then after, I mean, is there some period of time? And I, and I'm not really sure who the conflict with. It, it sounds like the city is in jeopardy, but then you just said that the waiver would be to Ms. Huth, and they haven't, and they've withdrawn their request for funding, so I'm quite confused about, um, whether or not there's actually a conflict at this point. If they aren't getting funding, I don't understand how it is, and they won't be receiving funding for a year, it, I don't understand how the conflict continues to exist. Could you explain?
As HUD expressed it to me, and I think it's in one of the letters in your packet, although I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly the date, I think it was September twentieth, two thousand and four, letter from HUD. They said that the conflict exists not because of future, future commitments to accept or not accept money, or future commitments to, uh, to not ask for money. The, the conflict exists because of the past actions of Ms. Huth holding both positions. And so decisions about, about whether or not to ask for money in the future, and HUD's mind, don't resolve that conflict under the revolving door provision. Uh, it sounded like in your, in your question, you're also asking about whether or not the city's funding is still in jeopardy, and at this point, uh, I, I don't think so. Um, and that's because the city, assuming, of course, that we continue to move forward in a proper and timely manner with getting this thing taken care of. Assuming that we do that, um, I don't think the funding is in jeopardy, uh, because the city's doing everything in its power to resolve the problem. Uh, there was a, uh, well, I think that answers the question basically, I think.
So, so basically, the, the situ, the situation really, although we have to, in some ways, be able to explain what has happened and document that, and you've put something together to, to do so, it's my understanding that it's really, um, the city is not, if we do that, the city is not in jeopardy, it's actually Habitat, which, and, and Ms. Huth. Those are the folks who, and, and we're not really a body to discuss Ms. Huth's position, her interests or the interests of Habitat for Humanity, that's not what we're here for. We're here to talk about the interests of the city, so.
Right.
And it's your understanding that, that, um, if we ask for this, uh, if we provide this documentation, then, um, it helps clear the city, and that by asking for an exception, it allows the city to partner with one of the most successful certified housing development organizations in town, actually, I don't think they're a Chodo, one of the development organizations in town, to continue to do work with them to provide low-income houses to families. So it would be in the interests of the city to actually request a waiver so that we could continue to work with an established organization in town to provide affordable low-income housing. Is that correct?
Uh, well, yeah. Again, that gets back to the question of whether or not HUD, or Habitat could receive HUD-related funds or properties from the city during that one-year period. Uh, and again, that's going to be up to HUD. I don't know what their answer on that specific point is going to be. But certainly, the city has had a long history of working with Habitat, uh, as a very effective organization. We've had a long partnership from well before Ms. Huth was involved with it, and we hope for it to continue for a long time. It's, it's been an outstanding organization for the community, and, uh, we want to do everything that we can to continue what has really been an outstanding relationship.
So, so just to clarify, what you said is that it's in the best interest of being, for, to be able to work with Habitat for Humanity, and whomever their board determines the executive director to be, and that is actually none of our business, then it, we should do all that we can to be able to continue to work with Habitat, and therefore, the ordinance before us requests, um, a waiver that would allow us to do that, and it's in the city's best interest to move forward with that waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
Other discussion? Question? If not, a motion would be in order?
I move-
Second.
I was going to read the whole thing, just for the record. I move we approve ordinance number two thousand and four dash eleven dash one thirty-nine, a revised ordinance authorizing the city attorney to request that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development grant exceptions for conflicts of interest of former alderwoman Laura Huth.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Uh, if there's no discussion, all those are, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Schinellwift?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with four ayes. And I think, um, you know, this is just an illustration of, uh, that we do need to take these conflicts seriously. There are a lot of, uh, conflicts of various levels that come, uh, before the council as, uh, we do have council members that are involved in a lot of different things, and those, um, conflicts of interest can, uh, range from something very minor to something very serious such as this, and this is probably at the more serious end of the spectrum. Uh, but it does, uh, remind us that we need to take those conflicts of interest, uh, seriously. So when, if you do find yourself in a position where you think you may have a conflict of interest, then, um, Mr. Holtz is free for, uh, consultation, and of course, uh, um, you know, you can always use your own attorney to get advice as well, but we just need to be very conscious of these. Uh, finally, on our, uh, last item on our agenda this evening is an ordinance, uh, granting a permanent easement, easement for Ameren IP.
I think Mr. Gray's going to-
I've been working with, um, the developers, owners of the, uh, Stratford residences, and part of that work involves how we're to reroute utilities in that area. And of particular note for this evening is the need to provide a, an electric utility to Ameren Illinois Power. And where this would go is, if you can picture where the Stratford residences will be built in the city lot eight, at the extreme north end of lot eight, that paved parking lot, uh, we are proposing here to grant a ten-foot wide easement across the northern portion of that strip of lot eight. So from Ray Street, it would go over to, across, um, this lot eight. And that's where a underground electric, uh, primary, uh, electric service would be constructed. There would be two six-inch diameter, um, conduits that would be buried underground and cased in concrete. When the project is completed, these would be located basically where, um, their parking area or, or north of the building, of the four-story building would be, uh, which is currently lot eight. So this ordinance this evening is to, again, give the mayor the authority to, uh, sign an easement, a ten-foot wide easement, um, that would grant Ameren Illinois Power use of this, um, property to, uh, maintain, repair, in the future, any particular problems that may, would happen to come, come about. Um, this particular electric service line will not only provide power for the Stratford residences, but with the removal of overhead lines in that kind of alleyway area between the, the old lot eight and the new lot eight, um, with that being removed, this underground service will also provide power to, to the Timponi-owned properties on Broadway Avenue. The one building is where the, uh, USGS offices are, the other building to the south is, uh, I think where the health center or methadone clinic was to go. So, um, that's what's before us this evening is, is, uh, for the property we own to grant a ten-foot easement to a utility company, in this case, it's Ameren, in order for them to, uh, provide underground service. And this is all being caused because we're removing overhead electric and phone lines, uh, that currently go over those, that parking lot, um, which is where the Stratford residences will be built. So try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Ms. Chandler?
There's a quick question. What will be right above the, uh, the, what's on the surface of the location of the easement?
Right, currently is the parking lot.
In the future, will it be access to the building or parking or?
It'll be, actually, the ten-foot easement will be, um, probably partially parking lot, partially grass, but it'll be north of the four-story residences.
So if they need access to dig that up sometime in the future, is it going to disrupt the access to the residents there?
For the most part, no. I mean, it may be a parking space or something might be dislodged for a bit, but, but it'll be very accessible, um, for the utility company.
Okay.
This is, um, undergrounding an existing line, and well, that's a feature of the project that I wasn't aware of before, so that's good news.
Yeah, all the utilities will be underground to conserve this site.
Any other questions? Is there no other questions? A motion would be in order?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Schinellwift?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Sathertwhite?
Yes. That motion carries with five ayes, and there being no-
Mayor Sathertwhite?
Yes.
We have one more item of business. Yesterday was Mr. Hayes's birthday, and in the tradition that he actually started very kindly toward the rest of us, I heard us to sing him "Happy Birthday." And for those who sing Welsh, you sing loudly, because I don't.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jim. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we stand adjourned.